Okay, I'm gonna call the order. Call being to order in our new location here at the former State Police Bike.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Rule call, please.
Green.
Here.
LaFleur.
Here.
Ms. Stravich. Ricks.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Yar.
Here.
Motion to excuse Mike Stravich from tonight's meeting for being out of town would be in order.
So moved.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against. Motion does pass. We move on to approval of minutes for the city council meeting of September 8th. Motion be in order.
So moved.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Is there any discussion on these minutes? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against. Motion does pass. We move on to audience comments on any non-agenda items. If anybody'd like to address the city council, we would ask you to come up to the new podium and state your name and address to the clerk for the record. If there's no one, we will move on. Mr. City Manager, any changes in the agenda?
No changes.
City Council, any changes?
No.
Motion be in order.
So moved.
Support.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against. Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Most been made and supported. There's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against. Motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration this evening. We have six. The first one is consideration of special event request for the 5K run and the fun run. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to give consideration on a request from the Richmond High School Track Team and Jennifer Brewer of Allstate Insurance for a 5K race and fun run as a fundraiser. The organizers are raising money for Coach John Coker as he battles cancer with additional funding going to the Richmond High School Track and cross-country teams. The organizers are proposing a one-year event, but if it's successful, it may end up being a multi-year event. The organizers would like to utilize the Macomb Orchard Trail, the Trailhead Park, as well as briefly disrupt traffic on Division Road and Grove Street up to the trail to start the 5K. The 5K would start roughly in front of the middle school, run down the drive that comes out by the library, across to Grove, and then enter onto the trail. Once on the trail, the runners will finish on the trail at the Trailhead Park, similar to the Romeo to Richmond run. In talking to the Chief of Police, we believe while those runners come out on the Division Road, they'll still be pretty tightly packed there, and we'll just be able to kind of stop traffic on Division Road while they cross, and then they won't be coming back through there. They'll be entering at the Trailhead Park, so we'll be able to open Division Road back up. We don't have to have like a detour or anything. And we'll have to close Grove Street down again until they enter the trail. Once on the trail, the roads can then go, remain open. Jennifer is here tonight, if you have any questions.
Okay. Jennifer, would you like to make any kind of a presentation?
Uh, no, Mr. Morton. One, we've met before and went over a lot of things. Just excited to be involved into the community and offer another opportunity to be involved and support a good coach and some of the high school athletics.
Very good. Does Council have any questions before a motion?
No.
Okay. Motion be in order.
I make a motion to approve the special event application from Jennifer Brewer for the 2015 5K race and fun run on Saturday, October 24th, 2015, and to allow the brief closure of Division Street from the School Service Drive to Grove Street and the closure of Grove Street between the trail to Division Road from approximately 9:00 AM to 9:15 AM.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Is there any discussion?
I would mention Troy and I both have met with Jennifer and kind of gone over some of the things we do for the 5K that's part of the Romeo to Richmond run, and she's agreed she'll contact those homeowners on Grove Street to let them know kind of what is happening that morning, as well as kind of have somebody at Grove and Monroe as kind of a course marshal there when we close that section, too.
I noticed one of the, one of the pieces that we got from you, John, said that the runners would be on their own crossing. It was on your brief Ridge Street and Low Plank on the trail. Are we going to close that like we do with the 5K right now?
Just like-
Like we did this weekend?
Yes. When they're on the trail, we'll have police at the trail intersections where it crosses a street.
Okay.
And police will stop traffic when there's runners present.
Okay.
And then when there's not runners present, they'll let the cars go. We do have, some of this is also geared towards a walk, and as we know with some of the races, some of the walkers oftentimes are walking together.
Yeah.
And at that point, we may transition from, hey, you know, walkers cross accordingly.
Right. Yeah, they're not running a race, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll definitely watch it for the runners, walkers. We may transition and let them know, hey, you're on your own.
Sure, sure. Okay. All right. Is there anything else that you have, any questions of us at all?
I don't think so.
Very good.
Just your permission.
Okay. We'll open it up to anybody in the audience have any comments on this? We'll bring it back to the table.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say something. I just want to really thank you for doing this. It's a race like this that really captures the essence of a small town, and it's utilizing local amenities, and it is bringing a community together for a need in the community. And it really touched me that you did this, that you put the effort for a great man and some organizations that really need help. And I'm, I support this, and I'm going to spread the news to as many people as possible to get them out. So just thank you.
Absolutely.
I think we all echo that. It's things like this that make Richmond different from other communities, so we appreciate your efforts.
I enjoy being a part of it. Right?
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against. Motion does pass. Item number two is consideration of adopting Resolution 2015-14, recognition of Richmond Community Theater's 50th anniversary. Mr. Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving Resolution 2015-14, a resolution recognizing the 50th anniversary of the Richmond Community Theater for the Performing Arts. The theater was founded in 1965 by artistic director Alice Moran and 36 theater enthusiasts, and they will be having a 50th anniversary event, I believe, in October.
Very good. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2015-14/A, resolution recognizing the 50th anniversary of the Richmond Community Theater for the Performing Arts.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I did have the, the great pleasure of meeting Alice Moran and her husband Norm when they first started community theater. Matter of fact, I was in one of the very first plays that they had, and I was a member of community theater for, I believe, about six years, and then I got married. Stop that.
You had added responsibilities, correct?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Well, with the fire department and-
Children and-
Children and that, it just, but it was-
So then you moved on to playing house.
Whatever. But she, she was an extraordinary lady.
To say the least. I remember Alice myself. I remember when I was really little, I used to watch you in plays. Had to add that, had to add that one. But this is a great thing. I plan on attending. I've talked to Max that sent the letter to us. I plan on attending on behalf of the city and giving them this resolution at their celebration, which is on the 17th of October. It'll be held at Menace's Hall, and you can get tickets at the, I believe, there's a couple places you can get tickets, but I know you can go to the Richmond Flower Shop, I believe, is selling tickets to this, if you care to go, and that is on October 17th. Great, great community theater program that we've had here all these years, and, you know, the buying of the building and securing that for community theater. And I think Max put in his letter, too, they just were selected the number-two best live theater by the readers of the Macomb Daily. Fox Theater was number-one. So says a lot about Richmond's community theater. We wish them best of luck on their celebration and hope that they're around many, many more years in the future. Any other discussion? Being not, any audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against. Motion does pass. Item number three is consideration of bid award aggregate material supply. Mr. City Manager?
Bid documents for the aggregate material supply contract were sent to several companies, as well as advertised in The Voice. Richmond Transport submitted the low bid for the current contract that is before you for consideration tonight. They were also awarded the previous two contracts.
Very good. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to award the fiscal year 1516 aggregate supplies, material supply contract to Richmond Transport at unit prices of $15.35 per ton for 23A limestone and $6.25 per ton for fill sand.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Any discussion? Being low bidder? Is this any cheaper? Like, our salt was cheaper this year. Was aggregate any cheaper?
I didn't check with Jim, and unfortunately Jim this week is in Mal Pleasant, but at the Public Service Institute, but I'm not sure if it's-
Okay. Just was wondering. Any other comments? Any audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against. Motion does pass. Item number four, consideration of bid award for the 2015 asphalt repair contract. Mr. City Manager?
City Council is scheduled to consider awarding the 2015 asphalt patching contract. Water main breaks, manhole rehabilitations, and other events cause damage to our paved streets, and we often contract this out for both a spring and then a fall patching contract. We did send this out to several contractors, as well as place it in The Voice, and we received two bids, the low bid being McIntyre United, and Jim has done work with them before and is comfortable with both their unit prices and their level of work.
Very good. Like their prices. Is there a motion?
I would move to award the street repair contract 2015 SR-1 in the amount of $8,071 to McIntyre United LLC with expenses charged, the appropriate line item and fund.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Any discussion?
I have a question. Why the difference? Why, why so much? Did Jim explain that to you, John?
Yeah, usually there's some contractors out there that they just throw a bid out in case no one else bids.
Because they don't want it, right.
You know, if no one else bids, they'll hire some other company and just take that money off the top.
Okay.
There was also one other company that normally is, is pretty competitive with the price that we received from the low bidder, and they, they missed it, forgot to send in their bid, and so they probably would have, we probably would have had two companies around that low bid price. They just missed the deadline.
Okay, so the, the price per yard was pretty much same?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Any other discussion on the motion? Any audience comments on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against. Motion does pass. Item number five is consideration of establishing the 2016 city council meeting schedule. Mr. City Manager?
In order to comply with the requirements of the Open Meetings Act, council must establish the schedule of council meetings for the upcoming year. The current year that we're in, we did change the meeting date times in July and August to begin at 6:00. I did put some language in your background brief, in case you want to do that again for the upcoming 2016 calendar year, you would just add that language to the motion provided.
Thank you. Is there a motion? If council would like to drop the rules, have discussion before the motion?
Yeah.
So we can work some of this out? Is that all right with council?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, okay. I would question July 5th. The 4th is following on a Monday. There could be a lot of people that may still be out or traveling or on their way back on the 5th. So I would like to see us go to the Wednesday, the 6th. I know I'm gonna be out of town.
That's fine with me.
Schultz isn't gonna be here, you remind me.
I think we should have it on the 4th.
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna be putting up with this, I think, for the next couple of months.
I don't know. Only three more meetings.
Yeah.
So July 6th, then, if you want?
Yeah, if that would work.
Yeah, I would agree.
The other thing is, we're asked if we still want to go at 6 o'clock in July and August.
I know, Mr. Mayor, I won't be here for that, but I thought that worked out swell. You know, getting here earlier and being able to enjoy some of the sunshine and, and family time.
How'd you guys feel?
I would agree. 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock?
Yeah.
July, August?
Okay.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to adopt the 2016 city council meeting schedule with July 6th instead of the July 5th date, and that all meetings in July and August would start at 6:00 PM.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against. Motion passes. We might want to note on the calendar, the September, it's gonna be the September 6th Council wants to deviate from that, would be held over at the schoolhouse.
Right. Yep.
Okay?
I would think so.
Do we have a consensus on that?
Yeah, I agree.
This table makes it a little bit harder to see everybody. Okay. Item number six, consideration of establishing a quarterly roundtable meeting date. Mr. City Manager?
Council normally schedules quarterly roundtable meetings for January, April, July, and October. The April one also doubles as a budget workshop. So before you tonight, I placed the calendar page for October with the available dates that were clear for all council members, which were Tuesday the 6th, Tuesday the 13th, and Tuesday the 20th.
Thank you, sir. Again, would council like to suspend the rules for a moment and talk about those dates, or are we ready for a motion? It's up to council.
Do we need to?
Does anybody got a problem with any of those dates in June?
I, I would prefer the 13th.
Okay. So would I.
That's fine.
Wait a minute. Well, you're still here. You're still here for that.
I need to be looking at it. Don't be getting rid of me so fast. Yeah, I'm still, I'm still here.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to schedule a special quarterly roundtable meeting of the city council, October 13th, 2015, at the city hall, beginning at?
5:30?
6?
5:30, 6? I don't know, Mike is the-
Mike's good at 5.
Mike's good anytime after 5:00.
5:30.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay. Any audience participation on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against. Motion does pass. City Manager's comments, sir?
I'd just like to thank both the volunteers and the city employees that helped with this weekend's Romeo to Richmond half marathon and 5K. With their help, it made the event go very smoothly. We are, again, in the process of getting all of the move finalized, so there are some things, like a clock for this chamber, that we're working on. We did spend the entire day today going through and checking every valve on the HVAC system and every thermostat, finding out what's working, what's not working. Clearly, there are some things not working, but we're getting to the bottom of it, finding out, did it not work because of the move? Did it not work because it never worked since 1995? And trying to determine all of those issues. So we're getting a lot closer to the answers to those questions after today, so it's kind of nice to see that. And the clerk informed me that as of today, or on today, about 355 of absent voter ballots went out in the mail. There'll be more as people request, but the first big batch went out today.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on to council comments. Jeff?
Well, I thank the Richmond Historic Society. It's always nice to get over to the, the schoolhouse and, you know, have our meeting, you know, where Jim went to school.
Boy.
We're gonna get our digs in because we only have three more meetings as you put it up.
It's very nostalgic. Despite the rain, seemed like, I hope there was still a lot of good, good old days.
There was.
There was a lot that went well despite the rainy time. And finally, it's great to be into our renovated city hall, to have this come to fruition. And again, I think, make sure people know, we have a nice former city hall, former bank available, very nice fixer-up property available for a unique proprietor.
Comes with its own vault. With its own vault. Dennis?
I concur, but yeah, the good old days was great. I actually got the opportunity to drive the rest of the float down the parade, which I haven't done in probably 20-plus years, and it was nice to see all the people during the parade instead of coming up at the end for being back setting things up. It was a great turnout, you know, great weather, and it's a great event. Also, on Friday, the football game against Delmont is gonna be a big game in itself, but it's also focuses on John Coker, on his cancer and fundraising. I believe they're gonna be selling Coker Strong shirts, if anybody's seen those. Unique tee-shirt and armbands and that type of thing, so all the support.
We'd be grateful for the praise there as well.
There you go. So there'll be a lot of things going on in that aspect of the, the focus on the, on the cancer side of it.
Dean?
Enjoyed Good Old Days. Thank you, Mayor, and the city. We had two items. Where are we at with the staffing for DPW, John?
I'm reviewing the-
One position open?
There's still one position open. I'm in the process of reviewing the applications Jim already has. When Jim gets back on Monday, we'll be scheduling interviews.
Okay, and also, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, Mr. Mayor, but can I just say that, you know, at our quarterly roundtable, we discussed this pet cemetery idea. Can we get that on the agenda and have it go, or no?
I will get the information out. There was, there were some concerns on how we did with getting the information to council, so we're making sure that it's put together correctly, and I do have it. The move kind of delayed me getting it to you, so I'll get it emailed out to council, and then with council's level of comfort with the information, we can either have it placed on an agenda or an upcoming workshop.
Okay.
I was hoping that we could discuss more details at our workshop.
Okay, all right, that's fine, that's fine.
A little more intense. There are a lot of things missing, and with the move-
Right.
And Good Old Days, his plate was overfull.
Right.
So that's why we didn't put it on an agenda before that, but I felt council maybe needs to take one more look at that before we move on it.
No, that's fine, that's fine. I just, I just want to make sure something's happening.
Oh, it is.
I don't want things just to fall.
They've redone the wording on it.
Yep, Jim's followed-
They've worked on the wording and everything.
Okay.
It's on his desk, it's just, it's one more thing for him, that's why it hasn't come back to us.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Paul has followed up with all the text changes. Jim has followed up contacting all the vets and some of the issues we talked about working out with them, local vets, so we do, I believe, have all the information ready for council.
Okay.
Okay. Jamie?
I would just like to thank all the Good Old Days volunteers, and especially the, the young folks who went around and cleaned up and took care of the trash, and they did an exceptional job with the grounds. They looked fantastic during the whole thing. I was very impressed with that, 'cause that's a lot of people coming into town, and there's just something unique about this year that I really felt like there was a sense of family, and I, I don't know what it was, but the parades were fantastic, the kids' parades were fantastic, just I saw so many families and friends just coming together and fellowship together, and that was just, just really enjoyable this year. So thank you to you, Mr. Mayor, for that, and to your whole organization with that.
Thank you. Jim?
I do like to say that the Good Old Days was impressive this year. The Midway was extremely clean, and it was very nice. Like Jamie said, it was kind of, it was, it was more friendly for some unknown reason.
Different company.
And, but they, they were very, very nice. And, and unfortunately, we had that rain from noon to 2:00 on Saturday, but once the sun came out, so did the people. I, I hope, hopefully, it was enough to take you over the edge for the, for the good.
It was a good weekend. We didn't sign any records, as far as we know, yet.
Okay.
Things are still coming in from different events and whatnot, but the rain and the cold temperatures didn't create a banner year from us, for us, but I, too, you know, want to thank the, all the volunteers that stuck it out through the cold and the rain over the weekend also, and, you know, I thought a marvelous job this year. It's probably the most organized I've seen the festival in my 28 years of chairing it, which speaks well of the people that have stepped up into some of the chairmanships of the events and the, and the rest of the volunteers that it takes to put it all together. And of course, the sponsorship was, was probably the best we've ever had. That probably was the number-one thing that helped this year. We had a new company on the Midway, Skirbek Carnival. They are fulfilling a contract from a company that got, that we had had for a number of years here that got bought out on September 7th, and of course, we started on September 10th. So they kind of knew it was coming, they were hoping, hoping that the sale was gonna go through, and so they were planning on having this other company come to fulfill the contract, but they forgot to tell me about it. So we were a little surprised the week before when we got the call, or two weeks before, I'm sorry, two weeks before, that they were coming. They were here 10 years ago and had done a nice job, but they certainly have improved greatly since we saw them 10 years ago. It is probably the single most talked-about thing that we had at the headquarters when people came in and said how nice it was. So we are trying to determine whether or not we are going to sign a multi-year contract with them, and it's, it's a big step for us to change after having the same company off, basically the same company for almost 25 years. There have been years they haven't made it because of the date. Sometimes, like this year, we ended up being the second weekend in September, so that screws things up for the, some of the vendors and certainly for the carnival people. But anyhow, it was a great Good Old Days overall, and we'll be okay, you know? We'll, we'll survive into another year and hopefully beyond. So we're looking at some major changes in the way we operate. It's necessary. It's just time to make some changes, and we hope for the better. We've already contacted the Michigan Festivals and Events Association to see what we can do, how we can do it better than what we are. They told us, well, we think you guys do one of the best jobs in the state of Michigan. You know, quite often, they will call us and ask us how we do things so that they can pass that on to other festivals. So we were very pleased to hear that from the MFEA office. But there's always room for improvement in everything that anybody does, so we're looking to improve again and change with the times. And that might be, that might be a change with some of the people that we have also. So new people coming in, it's great to see the young people coming in. It's just, you know, so many, other festivals have so many problems. It's the same people year after year after year, and there's no change. And we certainly have continued to make those changes, and there's people that were running the events this year that I remember as little children with their parents, when their parents ran the events. So that doesn't mean I'm old, old, but it does... I was waiting for you to take a stab, but anyhow...
You've given me more than enough material.
Yeah, I know. I'm sure I have. But it, again, it was a great, great time to show Richmond off, and I think we did that. I think the schools got involved with that, and so many people got involved. So hopefully, we can continue that tradition, so...
I'm not done yet, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, you weren't done? Okay. Jim, go right ahead.
Well, I was just letting you go, you know. Yeah, I would like to thank the city employees for the cleanup on Monday morning. The town didn't even look like we had people in it. And anybody that was in town on Sunday would realize how many people were in town and how messy it can get. But Monday, we have very good employees. That's all I can say, is they did a fantastic job. I'm extremely happy. The other thing is, how's our fire truck doing?
You know, I need to get a report from the fire chief. I know he's been kind of in contact with the company doing the work, kind of...
Yeah.
...sustained some frustration, so I have not received a report.
I've talked with him, and we're getting a runaround. You know? And we got a truck down, and if we were that slow paying them on repairs, I'm quite sure that...
Sure.
They wouldn't be too happy with us, but...
I'll find out from the fire chief.
I'm not real happy with this company right now for the delay on that. And then Friday, I went through town and counted eight streetlights out, but I believe that the people were in town Friday afternoon checking them out and fixing them. I haven't...
On Main Street?
Yes.
Okay. I'll have midnight's check.
Okay. Okay, can I start back up again?
And I don't want to forget, you know, I talked about all the volunteers and the sponsorship that we have this year, which was phenomenal. But also, again, thanking the city, the cooperation that we get from all your departments. You know, I've said it before and I'll say it again, you can't say it enough. So many communities have lost their festivals because they haven't had the support of their local government and/or have had to downsize so small that sore their crowds, and they can't afford to put on any kind of a large festival like we enjoy here in Richmond. So again, we appreciate that, everything that all your departments have provided.
Thank you. We'll pass that along.
Okay. Let's go to the calendar. Today being September 21st, we have a Tifa meeting on the 23rd at 7:00 here at City Hall that will take us through to the next mom-to-mom sale, which is on October 3rd at the Community Center on Festival Drive. That mom-to-mom sale is going to be from 9:00 in the morning till 1:00 in the afternoon. The next regularly scheduled meeting for the city council will be on October 5th at 7:00. That, is that true, that that will be the last day of registration for the November election?
The Monday, yes.
Okay, so the last day to register to vote in Richmond in the election in November will be October 5th. And you do that simply by coming to City Hall, seeing our clerk, Karen Stagel, and get yourself signed in so you can vote on November 3rd in the general election. Planning Commission on the 8th here at City Hall at 7:00. The fire department, I don't have the details, but they will be having an open house on the 11th.
Yep.
They'll have a pancake breakfast.
I'll get the details at our next meeting, but yeah, I believe this is the year we've gone to in every other year.
Yeah.
And they should have an open house and a pancake breakfast then, that Sunday.
That's October 11th at the Fire Hall, and as the city manager said, we'll get the And let me run by a couple of other things that is going to be going on that we talked about tonight. On October 17th, again, we have the Richmond Community Theater 50th Anniversary Celebration. And on the 24th of October at 9:00 AM, we have the Coker Run. And there will be trick-or-treating this year on October 31st, which is a Saturday. Is there anything else we need to add to the calendar?
Mr. Mayor, there's two corrections. Sorry, there's a special EDC meeting tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night?
That got scheduled. We have a downtown revitalization application that we wanted to get moving on.
Okay.
So that'll be tomorrow night. And the October Planning Commission meeting is tentatively canceled unless we receive some site plan, but pretty much, we believe the October Planning Commission meeting will be canceled.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that. We discussed it.
No problem. The EDC meeting, is that at 7:00?
7:00 here tomorrow night, yep.
Okay. 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 Anything else? Okay, we have a closed session this evening. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move to convene in the closed session in accordance with Section 8C of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, Pub. Act 267 of 1976, as amended for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with negotiation of collective bargain agreement of either negotiating party requests a closed hearing.
Support?
Support.
Most been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Being not, roll call being ordered.
LaFleur?
Yes.
Nistrovich is absent. Ricks?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Yark?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll take a five-minute break and go into closed session. Okay, we need a motion to reconvene into open session?
Make a motion to reconvene into open session?
Support.
Most been made and supported. Any discussion? Being not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye against? Motion does pass. We move on to other business of the city council. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the tenant agreement on wages and insurance with Appeal LLC dated September 2nd, 2015.
Support? Most been made and supported. Is there any comments? Again, we appreciate our employees staying with us still during some tough financial times here in the city of Richmond. Appreciate the job the administration has done negotiating this contract. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Most been made and supported. There's no discussion on adjournment motion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye against? Motion does pass. Thank you for being with us in our new city hall.